Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting, the special meeting of the Hickory City Council, and I'll turn it over to our City Manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Mayor, this is the Members of Council. Mr. Crone. Over the years, you know, we have worked to improve our land development code and have really simplified the land development code, and this is the next round of text amendments related to that. So we felt like it was worthy of a special presentation and workshop and discussion to really understand what's, fully understand what's in this, um, this round of amendments. So with that, I ask Brian Fraser, City Planning Director, to come to the podium and present his changes.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Crone. As Mr. Wood said, I mean, we, we take a look at our, our text amendments that come up in the land development code, which again is the law. It includes our, anything from subdivision, lighting, landscaping, um, stormwater, zoning, subdivision, the whole nine yards is included in our land development code, which most counties call UDOs, Unified Development Ordinances. But our LDC, uh, we try to update this, tweak it if you will, annually, and, um, you recently, last August, um, re-approved, re-accepted the, adopted the Hickory by Choice 2030 Plan. It was a major five-year revision. So the land development code was soon to follow, and these are the text amendments that we'll present tonight. We wanted to see how much was needed, and upon such review, our staff identified a number of recommended amendments, but we have not identified anything really large scale to be amended or reviewed at this time, unless you tell me otherwise tonight. So some of the highlights, anything from correction of typos, basically administrative actions within the code, revisions necessary to comply with recent revisions to either North Carolina general statutes, in this case subdivisions, or to federal law, in this case, the US Supreme Court's ruling versus, was Reed versus the town of Gilbert over a church sign regarding content neutrality, that we cannot, uh, review the message of the sign only its height and, and size limits, not what the sign says under the First Amendment of the Constitution. And then we identified the BOA, the Board of Adjustment, and not the Planning Commission, as the correct jurisdictional body to hear appeals to administrative decisions for yard and property subdivisions. So that, even though it's, it doesn't seem like a big deal, it is under general statute, and that was something we needed to revise.
And the Planning Commission is the Board of Adjustment, though?
Yes.
Well, you're faster than question. I was just getting ready to ask.
It is. They just wear that figurative, uh, different hat.
For the new board, would you explain how, why that transition took place, all that, the combination of Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission?
Well, years before I got here, there was a, a separate Planning Commission. There was a subdivision review board, there was a board of adjustment, and a lot of communities do it different ways. It just made a lot of sense to combine the two boards for their, their expert opinions and getting just a concise ruling. Even though we regularly have, regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings, the Board of Adjustment doesn't meet on a regular basis. It just, um, it meets at a time when there is, um, a variance, an area variance, a dimensional type variance has happened maybe two or three times since Mr. Overby and I've been here, and maybe half a dozen to a dozen times when someone didn't like the Planning Director's interpretation, the Board of Adjustment would meet to hear the citizen's concern versus the city's interpretation. Does that satisfy the question for everyone? One thing we did to increase neighborhood protection is within the IND Industrial Zoning District, we are now requiring screening of rooftop RTUs under the HVAC equipment that's adjacent to residentially zoned properties. So before, those units only had to be screened from a, a major thoroughfare, and now we're just trying to add some neighborhood protection. Because there, in Hickory, there's not a lot of well-developed transitional zones. We've tried to, um, permit them, allow them, increase the number of them, but we have a lot of districts where residential subdivisions, especially in our older neighborhoods, are directly contiguous abutting to our industrial areas. So we're doing this for the, the neighborhood protection. Also, the high-rise sign overlay district, we revised that to increase the allowable sign area from 150 to 200 square feet. That's just something that's being done across the state and across the country, so it still isn't looking like a postage stamp when you're driving 80 miles an hour on I-40, but it's not going to look huge or oversized either. Article six, this is an interesting one. It's ongoing, um, both locally and in the state of North Carolina, General Assembly, electronic gaming operations. We removed that from the use table in order to comply with state law. The state took away the, um, internet gaming, um, the electronic gaming, the sweepstakes and the bingo. Now they do allow games of skill. That's tough to, that's tough to regulate. That's maybe more of a police operation than it is a zoning enforcement operation. But I've talked to, um, our local elected leaders. There was a bill in the State Senate that made it through the Senate but didn't make it through the House about a year or so ago. There's been several cases. The, uh, the lawyers are many, and the lobbyists are many for the gaming industry. And so right now, we basically by law, if they meet our criteria, they have, we have to allow skilled-based games. But a lot of those ended, end up changing or transitioning illegally to games of chance, and some people have put those machines in gas stations, convenience stores, that never gotten approval from us. So a lot of this is really riding on what the General Assembly does and what law enforcement deems to be, um, legal or illegal under the states, under the state statute. Is there a question? Yes, ma'am.
So there are two I'm aware of that just popped up that are exclusively, you know, Irish Arcade or Fishing Something. Well, actually, three that I've seen. And people have asked, they said, are those legal?
Depending on what games are inside of them, yes. If they're a skill-based game, most of the people...
But do we monitor, or has anybody gone in to check?
We, we monitor them during their preliminary and final inspections, and once they're open, law enforcement usually goes in either with a uniformed officer or a plainclothes officer to make sure that the games are legal. The games are supposed to be regulated by the industry, if you will, and there's supposed to be a sticker on them that says they've been regulated by the industry. Most of the gables, that, most of the games we see here are fish tables. They're flat tables, uh, you can sit, about the size of a pool table. You can sit eight or 10 people around them, feed them quarters, tokens, credit card, what have you. It's a 3D display. It looks like you're looking into an ocean, and you're figuratively shooting, stabbing, nuking fish in a barrel. And they have the same game at Hickory Dickory Dock and Chuck E. Cheese, so they've turned what was a kids' game into a gambling venture. And some of these seem to work fine. Um, you know, I've been in a few, and at 56, I'm the youngest person there. Um, I don't have an oxygen tank, but there's a lot of other ones that, uh, that have undesirable elements have moved in, where there's been, um, illegal drugs, illegal betting. Some of these operations have been closed down voluntarily. Some have been closed down by Hickory law enforcement or the county sheriff's office. We had one legitimate gaming operation up near, that strip mall up near MDI on 120, on 321 North, excuse me, in Caldwell County, came in and told the people, "You're shut down as of now." And they, you know, they left, they left the property and they were looking for another site. So the interpretation around the state with law enforcement isn't consistent, nor is it with zoning. I mean, there's been other cities, other municipalities in the state that have saying, "We're banning these," and have gotten sued. So right now, we're allowing them. They seem to have hit somewhat of a peak. At one time, they were at 13, they were close up to 20, now they're back down to about a dozen again. It seems to depend a lot on the location of them as to what folks frequent them. Yes, sir.
Now, what, uh, what effect will the Supreme Court decision have on some gaming areas now that they, they just passed a, the Supreme Court just said that you can have, uh, betting on basketball, football, professional and college. It's going to be legal.
Regulated by the states. Yeah, right. So we don't have it in North Carolina.
Yeah, well...
That's something we're...
I think we're, North Carolina's the prime one to get it, huh?
As Councilman Lael says, we're waiting to see what impact, if any, there will be on local municipalities.
Discrimination issue. I think Nevada was allowed, but no other state was.
No, Mississippi had it.
Mississippi and...
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
Or another head.
Probably going to make...
Legalized gambling.
Maybe the water's more, it's going to clear.
But I think that, you know, I'm assuming nothing is going to happen until after the November election, so maybe after January, we'll, we'll see something come about, because there's a lot of people that are adamantly opposed to this, and, you know, I understand the reasons, the reasons why, so we're just closely monitoring, um, our local chapter of the American Planning Association and legislative side, some of them.
Are alcoholic beverages allowed in these things?
No. And no one has, no one has ever applied for them, although I've heard that there have been people bringing, you know, bringing in your own beer and have been asked to leave. But some of these, some people, basically, they have bouncers, armed guards, at the site because they're expecting trouble. It depends on where they are, and it depends on who manages them. I mean, it's, I can't even say that it's all the same in northeast or southwest, or it all depends on the business.
I've had discussions with municipal lawyers before, during, and after the Supreme Court opinion, and I, the North Carolina lawyers that I've talked to, we don't feel like it's going to affect North Carolina. I don't think our legislature's going to, based on prior, uh, decisions they've made, are going to go out on that limb.
We're also going to, we're recommending and requiring additional screening, um, with open storage, visible from private and public streets, the, should be chain link fencing, I'm sorry for the typo, um, with the slating would no longer be considered to be acceptable. Basically, we used to allow, we used to have, it had to be 90% opaque, and that's tough to enforce, what's 90%. And a lot of it over time will get damaged, faded with the sun, and it gets brittle. I mean, either the vinyl or the plastics will eventually crack and shatter, and then the, the business owners paying for it twice. So we're pushing, we're pushing now more with natural screening with walls or vegetation.
So, okay, let me ask on that one, because I've been around, I was, I guess you, were you here when we went to the screening?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right. Right, I can't remember what time, were you here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we had, you know, we actually had to extend the timeframes, and that was one of the things we said, well, you know, we sort of added in as a compromise. So the folks that did that and have the slats, will they now be in violation of the code?
They would be grandfathered.
It would be considered grandfathered, and it would be new businesses from here on out. And a lot of them didn't even want to use the slating. They were basically using heavy-duty landscape fabric, if you will. And the twist ties break, and they blow in the wind, and it, it just really looks unsightly. So we're trying to beef that up a little bit, mostly again to protect, um, the residential neighborhood.
But once someone's fencing becomes, or barrier becomes to a certain, um, downgraded and diminished, if they did anything new, they would have to...
We, we notify them and let them know they have to fix it. It's happened with some of our established junkyards, and we've asked them to fix it. And just as the same, I got a call this afternoon, a neighbor was complaining that some of the trees up at Publix in the parking lot had died, and he wanted to know what, what we would do about it, and I said, "We'll give them a latter night, 30 days to replace it." I mean, it's part of the code, so it's, it's similar in nature. Were there any other questions about this?
But if the slating deteriorates, will they be required to meet the new standard?
Yes.
To what degree? Because there's...
They'll have to comply with the new code if it deteriorates to a point where, I mean, if it's certain section of it, we'll probably have them replace it. It'll be, I, pretty much my determination.
Okay.
And then they can challenge that with the Board of Adjustment. I really don't want to...
So if you don't like the planning decision, you go back to the Planning Commission and ask...
Or change your hat.
For an adjustment.
Okay.
But no, we went, we went through that, and, I mean, we had over 80 that were out of compliance that we were able to bring back in within less than a year.
Well, that's good.
Then we had worked with the Chamber of Commerce and ended up getting their full cooperation as well.
I've heard some concerns lately from McDonald Parkway. I think the DOT puts that on the fencing there, that it's deteriorating.
Oh, regarding the quarry?
Yes. Does the same rules apply to that, or is that a different scenario?
Well, we, we can put it in the code, but whether the state would comply is, is highly doubtful.
So there would be an overlook there.
So in that, in that case, all we can do is ask them?
We would, we would ask them. I think they originally were talking about putting in a much stronger type fence, you know, in terms of visibility, that you wouldn't be able to see through it, because folks thought, you know, looking at the quarry, driving at what used to be 45 miles an hour would be a distraction.
Well, it's deteriorated.
It's deteriorated, yes, definitely so. Multifamily residential development containing more than 150 units would be required to provide at least two vehicular access points. That's chiefly for public safety, for emergency vehicles. That's been an issue in the past. Most, not all, but most developers would want that just for the saleability and the safety concerns for their residents, but we don't have anything at the time requiring that, so this would require that if the council, uh, does adopt this. We've asked Duke Energy to review our revised landscaping standards to make sure they're in compliance with, they have arborists and horticulturists, a number of them, and the expertise that, that we just don't have. And what's happened over the years, until we modified the land development code a few years back with our landscaping section, is that folks under the city's, our direction, if you will, would plant certain species of trees under high overhead power lines, and eventually those trees would grow to the point that Duke would hire a company to come in and give them a haircut. Well, sometimes when those trees were getting a haircut, not only did it look unsightly, but sometimes the property owners would say, "It looks so bad, I'm just going to cut down the tree." Then they were in violation of our code, so they were in that catch 22. So we've adjusted over the years our manual of practice in the land development code that we use the same type of trees, where they only grow to a certain point, that Duke Energy has, uh, has allowed under, under their code, and it's worked out rather well, and we have really good communication between us and Duke Energy in that, in that regard, and would save the business owner a lot of money in the long term.
Also residential, because that's, in my neighborhood, I've just noticed the last six weeks, Duke, a subsidiary of Duke, has come through and cut the trees back around the wires so bad, they might as well cut the trees down.
Exactly, and that usually falls to the residential property owner. I mean, it's happened to friends of mine, where they took a Bradford pear and they, they cut it in half, and those are dangerous to begin with. It just creates a sale effect. We also asked a couple of local sign companies to review the revised sign standards to make sure that maybe it wasn't too stringent, and if they got on the phone and yelled, "This is the best thing ever," then I know we, I had made a mistake. So we didn't get that. We said, "It's, it's not too stringent, and, you know, we're okay with it. What about changing this or that?" And I said, "No," but they were, they were satisfied with it.
Some examples of some changes that were made to the sign standards?
Um, basically, well, beyond the, um, the changes to the highway district, over the years, and now, some of the signs were allowing a greater square footage for the number of signs, particularly affecting some of those properties, like on the strip malls on 70, that are far off the road, so they're not necessarily looking like postage stamps. I mean, does it really make a difference if we allow two signs versus three, as long as what the square footage allotments are? So that's pretty much what we're looking. Was there any other specifics I missed? Sure.
I have, I have a few too, that I've noticed.
Sure.
That I wanted to ask about.
Sure.
And the, well, yeah, actually, I, I think, I, I wanted to get clarification, say...
Sure, I'm just going to that section.
We, uh, we have a section in there that exempts certain signs from our regulations, and we took out a whole bunch of stuff that would, that were exempted, um, that had to do, like, for example, flags, uh, of a civic organization or something like that might be exempted. But the reason I think to underline that was because we can't regulate content-based, um, signs. But if we're exempting it from the ordinance, are we not then implying that it is subject to the ordinance?
You want to answer that one? I think I know what he, what he's saying.
Do you understand the question I'm asking?
What section was that specifically in?
I think 1.5...
Page 209?
Um, yeah, probably.
What are some of the examples of exemption?
Official flags in senior corporate, professional, fraternal, civic, religious, or educational organizations?
I think we're limiting the official flag to, uh, one flag per lot, no more than five by eight feet.
I'm reading the section that says, "Signs exempt from regulation." So you took out, at the Lenora Ryan University would not be able to fly a Lenora Ryan flag, or at least, under our current code, we, it's an exempted sign. By taking it out of the exemptions, does it now become your regulated sign?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, my answer to that would be no. That is not, that was not the intent.
And then, of course, yeah, there is something that talks about actual height of the flagpoles and stuff like that.
And then we took out the section regarding, um, political signs, partially because of the Supreme Court decision, and partially because of state statute from a few years back that basically allowed political signs to be within the right-of-way, as long as they weren't within three feet of pavement or over 843 square inches, and we took that section out because basically the state overrode our local ordinance regarding sign regulation for political signs.
Right, but now, did, do we not have the authority to regulate when they can come up and when they can come down?
It's basically regulated by the state of North Carolina. Some of those complied with, some of those mirrored ours, and some of them did not.
So you have, previously, it was 60 days before an election, and then they need to come down after the election.
Within 10 days.
Very reasonable. Now that's out.
No, no, that's, the state, the state, that is the same.
Okay, okay.
But it's 10 days after the election, and the timeframe now is before, the date that kicks it off, the trigger, is the preliminary voting date. That's been something that we've talked to attorneys about in NCAPA, School of Government, and that's fairly clear. So maybe Hank, maybe the mayor was right back in the day, but that's the opinion of the attorneys now at the School of Government, where they can put the signs up, um, 30 days before the, um, before the first day of early voting, but they've got to take them down 10 days after. So far, most of the former candidates have complied, but then they've got to redo it again when the general election comes up.
So they can't just leave them from the primary, from the end of the primary?
No, they cannot. A couple of campaigns thought they could until I chatted with them.
So, we, there's no, there, there would be no reason, back to the, back to the exemptions, if the Lenora Ryan University's flying a flag, um, CBCC, we're not going to start regulating...
We're not considering those signs, not a flag.
Okay, got you.
While we're on flags, and I forget what they're called, the skinny, the skinny little flags that they're flying, now there's a name for them?
They call them pennant, or more commonly, feather flags. They, they were in our ordinance, it was a matter of interpretation. The council several years ago said they didn't want them, and we've told folks that, but now we're, you know, codifying it, that they are not allowed, for whatever reason, you know, the council back then did not like them, and we've had a lot of comments from the general public not liking the pennant or the feather flags, where I think part of it, in all honesty, was the sign companies too, because they weren't really selling them, and you could get them from, uh, Amazon or eBay or what have you. And, um, it was something that council had mentioned to us several years ago that they didn't want to see, and that was supposed to be put in the ordinance, and I think I forgot to take it, to put it in the ordinance, that it would be banned.
So, so just for clarification, are you allowed to have any of those, or is there a restriction on those?
You're not allowed to have any of those.
Um, on signs still, um, another one that, I mean, and I thought this one was consequential. I mean, but maybe there's something behind it, and I'm misreading, but it's under, um, mounting wall signs, um, oh gosh, in your pa, on the pa, it'd be page 211.
Yes, sir.
You eliminated the requirement that wall signs be mounted parallel to the building facade, which to me reads that now you can mount them perpendicular to the building facade.
We allowed that before, um, only in the C1 district. Now, we're not talking about 150 square foot sign, but, am I reading that wrong?
Section 10.5, signs in commercial offices and institutions in industrial districts. I like that, that, that signs be mounted parallel to the business, to the building facade. I don't want to see signs out perpendicular.
Because that's been allowed before in the C1 district, but it's not a huge sign. It would just be one advertising their business, so when you're walking down Union Square, you can see for the next block of which individual business would be there. And now we've allowed it in certain circumstances and other places that have done a mixed-use type of development, such as like Holler Mill. Are you looking at 10.5B?
10.5B, yeah. Building facade. Like I said, I, I may be, I need clarif, you know, maybe that I just need clarification. My vision is that you're driving down Springs Road or 127, and, you know, you've got CBS, you know, with a sign sticking out like that. And you're seeing that all the way down the park.
I see what you're saying. I mean, maybe we can re-clarify, I mean, that's what the purpose of the workshops for...
Because there's existing language in there that allows that in C1.
In C1, but we're talking signs about as big as a breadbox, because structurally, you wouldn't be able to do it.
Right, that, yeah. But the way I read it, like I said, I might be reading it wrong. It's talking about all districts. You're eliminating that requirement that they be mounted parallel.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay, we'll address that.
All right. That was purposeful, yeah, yeah. So we're talking about signs that are perpendicular?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that to me's, you know, I'd see that as consequential and policy level type stuff, not update.
Because I think we were looking for in those multi-use type districts, such as the, beyond the CBD, the Central Business District, because, um, I know Holler Mill has asked for it, I'm not sure if MAREX asked for it or not, but in mixed use with that type of walkability, to us, it just made sense. You know, it was an interpretation that was mine, and we just were looking at codifying it within the land development code.
Do we, I mean, are we, is it going to have unintended consequences in other areas of the city?
It's possible.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a height requirement, and it can't be, it has to have a clearance of eight feet. You know, we have that now, so nobody's bumping their head into it when they're going by, but I guess if somebody wanted to put a ginormous sign in, you know, they'd have to prove it structurally that it could work, but...
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
If you look right before that, the section that you're referring to is three, which was deleted and shown in red.
Right.
If you look right above that, the projection of a sign can only be 24.
Okay, so, so that would mean that if you were going to mount it, you'd have to mount letters that said CBS.
Yes.
Like that, 24 inches wide.
Here, here's, here's a prime example of that. Cataba Valley Boulevard.
Yeah.
Between where, which used to be Sunrise Appliance, and that's Blossom Gas.
Yeah.
Sign, that is what this is intending to accomplish.
Okay, I don't...
Are you familiar with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm work out there, but I don't keep remembering the sign.
Basically, what you're looking at is on the front facade of that wall which faces Cataba Valley Boulevard, you have a sign that's basically, it's horizontal to the building, but it projects, and it projects 24 inches out, and it basically says Blossom on the side. Blossom Gas going vertically on both sides of the sign, is what it says.
So, okay, so it's restricted in that, you know, we're not building, we're not building big signs out.
No, you're not having like a cantilever.
Yeah, got you. 24 inches, right? That's what it's going to do. It's extending it. But it can go, thank you.
As soon as the letters line up, when it's together.
That's it, thank you. But it can go up, that makes sense.
So they, so he's asking a question on how far up, out versus...
Uh, the signs cannot project above the roof line of the building, Mr. Crone.
Oh, okay, that solves that problem.
Yes, sir.
And it has to be eight feet.
Yeah, you have to have that eight-foot clearance.
Clearance.
If there's a sidewalk and pedestrian area under it. If there's not a pedestrian area under it, say if they're going to put it over, say, say you have a building facade and you have your front, your entrance, you have a landscaped area, you want to mount the sign 24 inches perpendicular on this particular wall, you wouldn't have the eight foot, because you wouldn't have anyone going under it.
I guess.
So you would, that would only come into a... So you would, that would only come into effect if you had sidewalk, pedestrian, or something to that nature there.
But if it's a three-story building, you could, you could go up three stories.
Sure, yeah.
24 inches out.
And in some of that instances, you have, here in downtown Hickory, some of the signs where you have on your upper stories that have businesses on it.
Well, in fact, I think we did that at the Art Center. We had some signs that went up like two stories high.
As long as that magic, as long as...
They're projecting out 25 inches, I thought, not 24.
As long as that magic number isn't, threshold isn't reached for area.
I got you, right, okay.
So what was the motivation behind that?
To offer better flexibility. A lot of, think about it this way, everyone. A lot of our zoning districts, we require very minimal setbacks from the road. So theoretically, if someone wanted to come in and build a building that's, say, 10 foot from the road, for example, they could do that. By doing that, what they actually do in the instances, they restrict themselves greatly in terms of what they could do for a freestanding sign.
For signage, yeah.
But what this does is it gives them the opportunity to have some of that visibility, if you're traveling this way and your building is this way, to actually know that that business is there before you get right up on it and you're like this, and you see a, a parallel mounted sign. That is part of the idea that goes along with this. Because if our, by our plan, as well as by a lot of our codes, what we're promoting is a lot of compact development in, around a lot of our major intersections, if you will. And if we accomplish that through getting, through building it pushed to the street, narrowed in terms of side setbacks, you're not going to have a lot of freestanding signs, because there's not going to be any area. The issue's not going to work, because if you have a sidewalk, and you have right-of-way, driveways, it's not there. What this does is it offers a bit of additional flexibility in terms of how to get some advertising space out there without being obtrusive in having something very just gaudy, to be honest with you. And that's what we were trying to accomplish, is in all honesty.
We don't allow any LED signs now?
Actually, we do.
We do.
The city's never prohibited them whatsoever.
Oh, okay.
And that's something that we put into the code a few years ago, that we had talked about, that council had, had allowed. I mean, the only thing that we do is basically we regulate the height, we regulate the square footage, and we regulate per DOT statute that they can't move, flash, blink, or scroll, that the message can change only every eight seconds.
Okay.
We do not regulate lumens, or the wattage, or, or the brightness.
Can we?
We could. I know the city of Asheville does it, and I've talked to other planners about it, and I've talked to, I've researched it through APA, I've talked to the sign companies. We can tell a company, you can only have X number of lumens on your sign, because they're looking at a certain number of lumens during the day, and a certain amount at night, increasing brightness, which makes sense, or decreasing it at night. The problem is, is enforcement. We don't enforce the code at night, we don't enforce it on the weekends, and what are we enforcing during the day? None of my planners, nor am I, trained to regulate and know how to regulate lumens. And what most, what's happened, even with a larger city to our west, Asheville, is that they regulated the lumens, and the sign company said, okay, this is how we've installed it. And as soon as they get their approval, Joe or Jane Citizen calls the sign company, comes back and says, how do I mess with this thing to turn the brightness up again?
So I guess for now, that would just depend on the, on the property owners of the strip mall, or it be at their district discretion?
Well, it depends. I mean, we, you can't interfere with the traveling public where it's such a distraction. I mean, the one out on 70 years ago, before it was replaced, 70 Southeast, near Wendy's, that one was made by a foreign company that was really in inferior quality, and there was times where I would drive by it at night, that that thing was literally strobing. I mean, it would talk about a distraction. I think Lamar Advertiser or another regional firm bought it, they took all that out, they put in something that was much more advanced, that wasn't causing that kind of distraction while you're driving, or brightness. Some of the signs that we see, you can, I mean, I can tell if they're manufactured here in the states, or if they're manufactured overseas with inferior quality. It's hard to regulate taste. As I tell my staff, if we did, I wouldn't be here. So take your shots. But we recently had a couple of these signs placed, and some of them are more expensive than other ones, and a couple times we've actually told the applicant, is there any way you can turn this down or change the background color from maybe neon blue or green to a black, where it's not as obtrusive? I mean, driving up and down 127, a big thing now is a lot of the churches want them, because they can change their worship times, or if they're having a chicken supper, or some kind of function. They are super expensive, it's been cost prohibitive in the past, but as technology changes, just like with our TVs and cell phones, the cost comes down. So we're seeing more and more people having these signs. It depends on if, how much they want to pay, and if they're going to get something that is aesthetically pleasing or something that's going to need some work.
So we can limit the size?
All, in all sign districts, we have limitations on height and size.
Still have a billboard, it's LED.
Well, billboards, no. Billboards, that changed in our Land Development Code several years ago. We're just talking about a regular, a regular sign. We used to have it where we would allow billboards, which we no longer do, and the signs could be LED if it was only advertising basically the time and temperature, like a lot of the banks did back in the 70s and 80s. We've changed that, because a lot of people now want that more modern look of, of the LED, because a lot of the old panels will fade and crack and break over time. Just summer, the technology is much better than others. But could we regulate it? Yes. Would it be difficult to set up an ordinance or something in the Land Development Code? No, but enforcing it would be next to impossible. Any other questions regarding?
Well, I got a lot of complaints about the one on 127. I mean, it was numerous.
Like the fastest change in them?
Well, that one too, but this was, this was another one, and it was the color that you set it from blue to black, which improved it. But if there's a proliferation of that sort of sign, where they're not willing to change the color, that, you will hear about that.
Yeah, and it's getting more. So I'm hearing about that one.
That's actually a little weird.
Well, it's, I don't want to say the name, but...
It's a relatively new business in Viewmont?
Yes.
Yes.
But we do have...
If you didn't see it, then...
I see it every day.
If you didn't see it, you will see it.
Yes. But further, to be fair, further up on 127, one in Viewmont, one further up on, both on that same east side of the road, there are at least two churches that have that LED technology, but it's not as colorful as, as the one that we have. And that, that one, I believe Mr. Zelinski had a call a couple times to have them stop the flashing, strobing message. It has to be static for at least eight seconds.
But if you reach a point where it's allowed in the ordinance, and folks aren't voluntarily willing to change, then, you know, it could be a problem. That, that one was bad, I thought. If you didn't see it, then you missed a show, because it was, I'm glad they changed it, at least for now. The other one was, the other, further down was not electronic, but...
Is it within code?
Pardon?
Is that one within code?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I almost feel bad, because there's another business on its side that hasn't assigned it yet.
I mean, you know, Mr. Wood is correct. I mean, as technology changes and prices come down, we could easily see a proliferation of these, you know? Is it something that, that you want to see? There are some communities where, a lot of them have it with the overseas technology, where it's not as aesthetically pleasing to most, to, you know, most people. So, but it is, it's extremely difficult to regulate those, those lumens, or something called NITS. I don't even know what it means. But the folks that we have who had these, I mean, they've been willing to comply with our request to, to either regulate the message speed, or to turn down the lumens, and they've done it voluntarily. There's been one over on 70 near the Fair Growth Business Park. We've had that issue with them on and off for years as well.
Probably make a little gun, you can just drive by and click and see what the lumens are?
Well, we have a noise meter, and...
I know, they've got temperature guns.
I'm not sure. There may be technology that would measure it.
It'll come, it'll come if we start getting some, a lot of cities, you know, have them enforce that.
Is there, do you have an opinion about the LED signs? Is that something you'd like to look at, or are you satisfied with what's allowed currently?
With all this gambling and everything, I don't want to be lit up like Las Vegas.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we would look for direction from you all, if you want us to explore our options.
And we can always change our code depending on what happens down the road.
Yeah, the code can be modified anytime through proper notification, advertising for the Planning Commission, and, and for City Council. Doesn't have to be the once a year. You know, there's times when we bring you something between that 12-month period. Certainly, we do that a lot.
But we'll be in a reactive mode.
And I'd really be proactive on it. I don't want it, all of a sudden it's in our face, and we have to do something, then there's...
Right now, I don't think these gaming businesses can afford such a sign. A lot of them are looking at making a quick buck before the general statutes change.
How about we ask the staff to look at our options, and bring back some options to us, what we can do and tighten up?
Sure.
Because if we're concerned about this, the ones that are already there, we would certainly have to grandfather them in red, but we would eliminate future problems.
Well, we're in a good situation right now that we don't have that many of them.
We'll come back with some options on that particularly.
Just to let you know, there are a couple churches that applications are, are on the way, so...
Typically, they're not as bright, for some reason, I don't know why.
I just think it's the...
Limit the size, maybe that will limit it.
Well, they're usually a bit more subdued. I haven't seen many churches that are as flashy as the, the new business in, in Viewmont. They're usually, they're pretty conservative. Most.
Let's explore our options.
Basically, again, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but a lot of these amendments were necessitated due to recent changes in state general statute or, or federal law. We're also trying to make sure that the amendments in Land Development Code are fully consistent and compliant with Hickory by Choice 2030 that you readopted last August. Again, the plan itself doesn't specifically address the verbatim language within the LDC, but we just want to make sure that it was, that it was copasetic, and, and also that the Land Development Code would continue to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. And just to let you know that the Planning Commission did review this back in March, and they did approve it as is unanimously. But I don't believe they would have any problems, any changes that, that council wants to make, and we'd certainly consider any revisions, and we'll take a look at the sign ordinance specifically.
I probably, you know, I've been out of town, and I probably should have, I wish I could have come sit down with you, because I have several things in here.
Well, we can set something up at your convenience.
I can go over them now, and it might be good to council here, let's see. Our subdivisions, we're saying, look developers, y'all don't have to dedicate streets anymore, because that's an unjust taking. Is that what, did I paraphrase it correctly? And it would be Article 2, Section 2.3.4. Or it's highly likely, according to the language here, that you would consider an unjust taking.
Which section are you talking about, Mr. Leal?
2.3.4.
2.3.4. No, that's, that's not what that is saying. That's for a minor subdivision. Basically, what that is saying is that we can't compulsively require someone to dedicate right-of-way along a proposed thoroughfare. Back prior to my employment with Hickory, there was a practice at a point in time where if a thoroughfare existed on a map...
Right, yeah, and then, yeah, the MAP Act. Yeah, that's, so that's what this is addressing. Not, not the potential for subdivision in a neighborhood and streets and all that.
What this is saying is it's precluding that from happening. If someone comes in and says, okay, I'm going to build a subdivision, I've got 45 acres, I'm going to build 20, 30 lots in here, put in some streets, yes, all the streets right of way will be dedicated on the streets. The streets will be constructed to our specifications, and either they will be privately maintained, or they will be offered to the city for maintenance. That's basically what I was doing. And you hit that on the head. What we were trying to avoid is basically doing a unjust taking of property. And that was a practice that the city did for many years. And basically, if it was on a map, whether it was going to be there in the future or not, hey, go ahead and give us up some property. And I never felt comfortable with that, just because I didn't think that that was the right thing to do, to be honest with you. And as Mr. Leal said, the courts, as well as legislature, validated that formally here in the state within the last year or so. The section that I do want to bring to your attention is just before that section you were talking about, Councilman Leal. And this is an altogether new section, and I want to, for council to understand some implications that may go along with this. And this is, this is in blue, and it's, it's Section 2.3.3. This is actually new into North Carolina general statutes. It's technically called an expedited review, but it's not really an expedited review. This is an exemption to the subdivision code. This past fall, I happened to be in Greenville, North Carolina, for a planning conference, and ran into a faculty member from the School of Government. And he and I chatted about this for a while, and I said, is this an exemption, or what? And he said, well, yeah, kind of, sort of. And you get that feeling. But what this does, if you can read this expedited review, what this basically does is allow someone to divide a property without putting any infrastructure in whatsoever. So you could take a piece of property that's five acres or greater, and bust into three lots, and not install any streets, any sewer, anything, as long as the lots meet our minimum size requirements. The caveats to that are that it has to meet that requirement, and they can't do it but every 10 years. So what that does is precludes just development coming in, and piecemeal and development together over time. I think what this kind of does is if anyone's familiar with county zoning, lots of counties have what's called family subdivisions, where you can cut a, cut a lot off for Johnny and, or Suzie, and they build a house out back, this kind of does that inverted. So the implications this may have for the city is, is public services and public safety. We require paved driveway, but that's not an awful lot of anything. A paved driveway could be six, seven feet wide, and try to put a fire truck down that to get someone who was having a heart attack. But there's not a lot we can do about it. But that needs to be expressed to council, so they at least understand that this is our new normal, we have something we have to deal with here.
If you go do that in Greenville, you've got to space your children out 10 years apart.
Yes. Yes, yes, sir, yeah. Yeah. But I mean, that's, and that's a real concern. At first I was like, ah, but yeah, that's, you know, just public safety, that's a true concern I would have on that one.
You have to plan for every possibility. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
Someone had something that didn't go through, so they wrote a law about it. I guess that happened.
So while I got you, the, okay, and our big commercial zones, like C2, I guess that would be a big...
Yeah, that's, that's a corridor zone.
Yeah, corridor zone. You eliminated the requirement for public transit.
Yes.
Why? I mean...
Because, here's why. Because if we, if we required public transit to be at every commercial development there was, Pima Wagons or Greenway is not going to stop at them.
Yeah.
What we would look at is, we would then consult with Greenway at that point in time to see if there is warranted to have a public transit stop at that location. Discompulsory is saying that every shopping center along this stretch here has to put in a traffic. A transit stop is unrealistic.
Right.
And most of them, for the most part now, are in our shelters that we have adjacent to the right, the rightways. Very few buses actually pull into developments, into a shopping complex. And I'll give you this for example. For, for those of you that were here when the Loews was constructed on, in Viewmont, there's a transit stop behind Bank of Granite in that shopping center, and I've never seen a bus go to it.
And a bus never has gone in there.
And that's what we were kind of trying to get away from on that particular instance.
Okay, okay, got another one for you. Plan developments got away with, did away with prescribed densities, and said, any densities will be determined by city council.
In compliance with our plan, our overarching.
But how are we going to determine density requirements, gross floor area?
You'd basically then look at what our comprehensive plan says about recommendations for the area.
Okay.
That, that does have recommendations, and if you read our comprehensive plan, Hickory by Choice, it does have some recommendations about the types and intensities of types of developments that you would have in a place. What that does is it gives council the flexibility of not being tied to X number that's written into a law. And that will be what the Land Development Code is, is a law, where the Hickory by Choice plan is a recommendation plan. You can either say, okay, yeah, that seems about right, but let's back it down a little bit.
But on the, on the flip side, if I'm a developer, how do I know what city council is going to approve or not approve?
Yeah, that's a very, that's a very true comment there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You would, you would really look at what the plan has in of itself.
And under what? And under what process would they bring it forward to Council? And could you run into where your Tom's allowed 65%, Bill's got a little bit better presentation and we like what he's selling a little bit better and we give him 80%?
Yeah, you could run into that. And that's what you run into in a legislative process.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe that's one thing y'all can look at. Maybe streamline that as a kicking at the Council to determine, you know, max. I think it would be just maximum density, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We're not setting, we're not setting the bar bottom.
Yeah, but, yeah, so that, yeah, maybe that's something y'all can vouch around internally because I don't know that I'd feel comfortable trying to, yeah.
And the reason we put that forward is to offer some flexibility.
I understand. I get it.
Because if you have that definitive concrete numbers in a law, we can do nothing about it.
Yeah, but it's up here, right? It's up here and everybody knows. I mean, it's whatever it is. It's wherever it is. It's there. But it doesn't mean everybody builds to that point is what I'm saying.
Sure. To your point, it opens up to play favorites.
To play favorites and puts us in a position maybe that we're not best suited to make a determination.
And our staff will make a recommendation.
Sure, yes, sir.
Then the developer can come over and look that it's not enough or-
Exactly.
Does that come straight to Council or does that go through the Planning Commission first?
It would go through both, Mr. Lael.
Okay.
So if there's a way to tighten and prevent that scenario from playing out to some degree? Sure, sure. We can, we can review that, yes, sir.
Okay, pitch roofs and the multifamily development, why do we do away with pitch roofs adjacent to single family? Because-
Because not everyone constructs a pitch roof on the whole park.
I know, but if we're adjacent single family, which most single-family homes are pitch roof, why would we not require multifamily to have pitch roofs? That's one that I would be against.
Lots of times you have parapluces, you have taller buildings. I mean, you have different-
Yeah, I understand building construction, but I know in the city, you go around and you'll see cases where duplexes were built, flat roofs in an R3 zoning around single-family homes and they stick out like sore thumbs. And the requirement that if you're going to do multifamily in an R3, that it be a pitch roof, to me, is a no-brainer.
We can review that also.
I don't know how Council feels about it. Do y'all, do y'all understand what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we're eliminating, we know that we're going, getting less restrictive.
Yeah, and we need to be more restrictive for the single-family.
We need more sensitive to our single-family homes.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
And this is in R3, right?
Well, I think it's in multifamily development. It would be in R1, R2, and R3 districts.
Okay.
I mean, it may be the structure itself. I don't recall ever seeing many multi-unit pitch roof. Are we talking like apartment complexes?
There's tons of them in Charlotte. You go down there where there's been redevelopment, you get a lot of multifamily, but they look like houses and they're in these neighborhoods. In some cases, they have two fronts on them. They might be on a corner and they'll have a, you know, both sides look like front doors. So-
What's our code relating to how many multi-unit housing units we can have in residential?
It depends upon the district, ma'am. It varies. It varies. Actually, you can get, you can get denser in Hickory than anyone would want to build. You can get 25, 30 units an acre in some of those long districts. No one builds that because there's, one, there's not a market here and this is not going to happen. I mean, our development ordinance in all stretch of imagination is much more generous than anyone would build here. And it has been for a number of years, just no one's ever taken advantage of it. And we've offered that, we as an organization and as you as a council, offered that as incentive for development, but no one's ever bit the hook.
That's something you can maybe look at.
Sure.
Well, asking that question, so where can you build apartment units with flat roofs currently versus-
In a commercial districts, mixed-use districts.
Okay. So in this case, if a multifamily unit was going up beside a residential home, then it would, they would have the option of doing either or. I mean, that's the change.
Correct.
Okay. So that's where the heartburn is in terms of y'all will leave it like it is?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What was the purpose in changing it?
Offer better flexibility in building types.
Do you get that a lot from builders for-
Some, yes. Yes. And different, because people try to offer you different products to look at in terms of what type of product they want to build with.
Yeah, in larger cities like Greensboro and Charlotte, you'll see a lot of them where they're like the articulated, the apartments, the multifamily, they look like boxes. Maybe the color schemes are a little bit, some of them are pretty out there, but they allow flat roofs and they're like box structures. And some of them are set back off the road and they have an overhang to the sidewalk. So it's just, it's like Cal said, it's just flexibility for development and for different styles. But if that's something Council doesn't want to pursue, you know, we can certainly modify that.
Well, maybe in an urban environment, right, and to the extent we've got urban environments in Hickory, but you know what I mean, in our more commercial environments, then maybe that does make sense. Let's say you were doing something up against a street front on 127, maybe, you know, a flat roof there does-
So maybe something in the CBD or certain-
Yeah, right, that kind of thing.
Neighborhood, neighborhood commercial.
But you start getting these R districts and allowing flat roofs or giving options for flat roofs, it's a little bit of heartburn to me.
Now, what if you wanted to build a single-family home with a flat roof?
I don't think we could prohibit that.
No.
And we have some of those.
But there are some, yeah.
It's a style, it's an architectural style for a single-family, but not for the multifamily.
I mean, we see a lot more of those, I see a lot more of those here than I did when I was up north for obvious reasons, snow load, but there were still those architects that would build a flat roof and it would leak or collapse.
So the consensus is leaving that one as-is?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need a vote on that?
We have to vote in a free vote, I think.
They hadn't gone to public here.
No.
Eventually.
This is just a workshop.
Yeah. Well, we'll make a change in code.
He changes it, we don't have to vote. And then we can approve it with that in these changes and that change.
And will you take these recommend, or these ideas and comments back through the Planning Commission, since you said they had already approved of all of these?
You don't have to.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm not sure you'd want to.
Y'all will find a decision.
No, okay.
We're taking notes now of any comment that you've gotten. You know, we can bring this back to you with-
Yeah, you're not rewriting it, you're pretty much tweaking it.
Okay. Just let them aware of what our-
I mean, we just may not be able to go to the first meeting in June with this, but that's, I mean, this is, we're not under a rushed deadline for this, I don't believe.
I guess I want them to be aware of our thought process going forward, just as comments.
I mean, we can convey the message, but you don't, aren't required by law to go back to.
Okay.
So 8.4.7, which is building lot sizes, you said, "We're going to amend this so that you don't have a minimum lot size, you have a minimum," it's related to the minimum buildable area. So if I understand that correctly, and clearly some of these I don't understand. 8.4.7, suitable building sites.
Yeah, are you looking at A?
You know what page it is?
I'm looking to find out. I've got it noted on the summary sheet.
Here's what you're looking at, Mr. Lael. It's under Section 8.4.7. This is the subdivision chapter of the Land Development Code. This does not say that the lot in and of itself has to be 1,250 square foot. What this is saying is there has to be a place on the lot that's buildable, that's at least 1,200 square foot. So that's saying that you're basically not creating a non-buildable lot, is what it says. So your minimum lot sizes prescribed by zoning still exist.
Right.
This is, this is a holdover that's been in our code for probably 30 years. That's a holdback to when you used to have septic tanks and not so much sewer lines everywhere. But there is a requirement and it's been in place for quite a while now that you have to have a building area that is equal to at least 1,200 square feet.
And so who determines what's buildable, what the building area?
That would be staff. You'd look at topography, you'd look at slope, you'd look at slope lane, right-of-way, sewer.
I wouldn't want to be y'all having, because you can, you know, I guess it's vague is what, that was my point on that one.
And it is, yes, sir.
It's a judgment call. Okay. Article 8, 8.8, conservation subdivisions. Now, this one I did not understand either. The summary says the section was amended to increase the amount of conservation area, but if I look at the document, we've gone from 40, from 50% with a density bonus, I guess, to 30%.
May I flip it here to Walway out here, sir?
Let's just move this brand this.
No. You know what page it is?
Yeah, it's on page 162.
Yeah, you've, basically, the conservation area has been reduced.
Okay, in the summary, it says the conservation area had been increased.
That may have been wrongly worded, sir.
That was an error. Yeah, that was an error. So it's been decreased to 30%.
Yes. And the reason behind that is because these were very, let's say, not popular because of what you were dealing with in terms of, one is that you're required to put, a developer will be required to put away so much land that then they would have to find someone to professionally maintain that from there on out and no one was interested.
I think 30 is okay with me.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was a clear clerical error.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Okay. Make sure I was reading that one right. And then on the landscaping, I mean, you said you talked about Duke Energy, but I mean, you relaxed our parking lot landscaping standards. What's driving that? I mean, I'm not, I've not heard any of developers-
Well, we have.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Complaint about our parking lot landscaping.
Yeah. It's a common, it's a very common comment that our staff receives every time we review a set of plans.
But, I mean, but is it out of whack with what the rest of?
The landscaping from municipality to municipality, across the board. It's from people having an Amazon jungle to a Navajo desert. We're somewhere kind of in the middle, if you will.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's what you're looking at there.
Mostly local developers complaining.
Yes, oh, yeah. The national guys, they'll do whatever and just go on to the next job.
Right. Is it, is it too restrictive or is it?
Yes. It's too much, the complaint's too much, it's too much trees in the parking lot. The complaint is then is maintenance, trees around automobiles and things of that nature.
So bellhop, was that developed under the rule you're changing?
No, that was developed along a previous code.
Okay, so give me an example of one that was developed under the existing-
Let's see here, we got under this one.
Would that be Publics?
Yeah, Publics.
That doesn't seem overly-
Yep.
I don't think it's overly-
Yeah, that's awful.
No, it's not. I mean, it's 30 feet on center. When we talk about going to 45, it's a pretty big jump.
Yeah.
So Publics is within the current standard?
Correct.
And, you know, Cal knows I've developed property. It's not that I'm insensitive towards cost to develop and stuff like that, but I-
I'm just looking to ways to relax it so that you can get better.
No, I get it. Look, I think it's important that we're business-friendly and that we are sensitive to stuff that makes sense, but I just, I mean, I think we're talking about trees that in the end, the benefit of those, that extra tree or two would be worth it.
It's beneficial. I think the aesthetics of more landscaping, more trees is better than less.
It can also be the health of the tree as well, because in here, for the street trees, we're at 30 now and we're recommending 50. That is for the health of the tree. And don't forget with the developers, and we do usually hear from the local ones more so than the regional or national because they've got a different budget and they just look at the code and, like Cal said, some think we're much more restrictive and some think, wow, this is easy-peasy, this is great. A lot of it affects the health of the tree. And part of it, too, is we hear every development project regarding the signs. And I, you know, kid around with my staff and saying the trees grow a lot faster than the signs do. I mean, there's some businesses that have just turned off their signs or pulled them out because the trees now, now cover them. I mean, I understand what you're saying about landscaping and we don't think we've cut it too far back, but, you know, whatever Council advises. One thing that we've done is we've changed the planting types in the parking lot. I mean, you've seen a lot where there was fruit-growing trees in the middle of a parking lot and that only leaves a smucker's mess. I mean, some of those acidic berries will eat right through. I had a call yesterday from a local insurance company, "Can we please cut down this tree that's over top of our cars that's eating the paint?" And we get calls like that all the time. So, I mean, I understand we've got to maintain that balance with the trees, but we also hear all the time about visibility, not only to signs, but to the business facades themselves. So it is, it's a very delicate balance.
But wouldn't that be changed by them raising the canopy as those trees grow, they just maintain them? But it gets back to your issue.
Well, some of the trees, I mean, that can't be done.
I mean, they're plants.
Do we specify on this, yeah.
Do we specify the kind of trees that they can use?
We suggest in our manual of practice and then when we talk to people, you don't want those fruit-bearing trees. You don't want trees with thorns. A lot of people in Hickory and up north, too, used to use white pines as a screen. So that happened where the old Hobby Lobby was, where the old Winn-Dixie was, where they used white pines as a screen from that neighborhood. And after maturity, the white pines will drop everything under 20 feet. So the words, the screen, the screens disappear.
The balance may be the type of vegetation that is required-
Yes, sir.
-versus, I mean, I'm just going about it.
Well, and I don't know that there is a balance. I think what we got is working good and I'm sorry you guys have to fend that off, but you can put them on Council and say, "Hell, that's Council pass that damn 30 feet every, every 30 feet."
Oh, believe me, we do.
Good, good. But I don't hear it. I just don't hear it and I don't think it's unreasonable.
When you measure these conservation areas and so forth like that and say you've got so much square footage, if I build a berm, you measure the square footage up one side and then down the other, or do you measure it horizontal?
It's horizontal for the base. I mean, Kevin, what is every one foot in height? You've got to have three or four horizontal versus vertical for a berm? One of three?
I mean, I could build a steep berm in there and get that square foot.
So I'm hearing that thing right on the street. If Council's comfortable with the current rule, but I'm hearing you have had issues with types of vegetation.
Types of vegetation and species too close together.
I mean, I can see that side of it. I mean, you don't want an apple tree growing in the middle of a, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why, can't we suggest or state, no apple trees, no-
So can we make that change? We'll keep the current standards generally come back with-
And we just change the vegetation.
But we can change the specific-
And just, so the message we're preaching is be business-friendly, business. So I appreciate that. I mean, so they're pushing the envelope in some areas where we make sense to change. So don't get the message that you're going, so this is good. This is a good, find out where the limits are.
Well, this will probably, Mr. Wood, necessitate the manual of practice being revised, but we can work with Kevin and his folks to do that. And we're still continuing to work with Duke.
Okay, we got one last thing and that is, and this is not sales-serving, of course, we have a furniture market out there and I happened to notice the change in parking requirements. We got plenty of parking, by the way. We can meet the current, the proposed changes. It's not about us, is what I'm saying. But I do, did want to explain that from a furniture, currently, furniture stores have a different requirement for parking than typical retail. And I presume the reason is because if you're selling furniture, you're, it takes a lot of floor space to show sofas, bedrooms, nightstand. So it's a much different traffic pattern than you would have at a clothing store, right? So putting furniture stores in with regular retail, I don't think-
That's not working.
I don't think that was the good. And then the health club gym, I didn't really know on that one. That was the other one that you were recommending getting away, going away with.
Yeah. Well, some of them we have are different. One that we've dealt with over the years, when I first came here and Cal was already here, you know, we had a, not only was our use table 22 pages, but our parking was much, much broader as well, where, you know, would say, "This type of store needs this much parking." One thing that we've come up repeatedly is for a sit-down, for a restaurant, we require eight spaces. For a sit-down restaurant, yeah. For McDonald's, no. So these are things we're always going back and forth with. I mean, if you have any recommendations-
I would recommend you leave it, you're the expert.
The same unless, yeah, unless there's been, unless y'all had specific experience that would-
No, and as far as the parking problem, basically what we did-
Because they're becoming more intense. What you're taking into a more intense, you're making it, building more parking.
What we did, we were collapsing, just like Brian said, we were collapsing things into basically single categories.
Yeah, right.
And the numbers were coming, we weren't pulling them out of the air. Those numbers are coming for initiative transportation engineers. They have a parking generation manual. generation manual, and those numbers, I was pulling the numbers from the parking studies that were done. So those aren't something we're making up or getting from some other city or whatever. There's actual case studies that show that these numbers exist.
But you said, the way this is written is, or what you said in your summary was, that furniture stores are being eliminated.
Yeah, because it's...
Because, because they're covered under some other broad use.
Under retail.
Retail, well, that, I mean, if you're, I, I...
I hear you, but they are retail.
I, I understand, I understand, yeah. And I'm not trying to be argumentative.
I, I understand.
But you, I think you understand the point. It takes a lot of space to show furniture, and so timing and square footage is more difficult.
And on that, yeah, I get that. Can we, can I go back to one thing with, with council, and Brian and I talked about this, we never really pulled it out here, landscaping in car lots. You want to talk about something when it screams is a car lot that sells tens of thousands of dollars of cars and have trees planted on them in the parking lot, stuck all of them? We had considered trying to do something with the ordinance to do vehicle sales lots. Would that be something that council would be? If we're going to have to revisit some of this now, would that be something that?
They would be exempt.
Well, not exempt altogether, but...
Reduced.
Yeah, I would be.
I understand, I understand sort of that.
You, you haven't, say, take the Honda car, they have $5 million of cars out here.
Their products outside, yeah, I agree.
It's, that's something that I hear all the time.
I can understand.
I just, I just wanted to float that before I sit down and...
I agree.
But we're back to, I mean, while you're...
I don't know if there's really a resolution to the furniture.
Sure, if we want to leave it the same, it's not been a problem. We're basically trying to consolidate uses is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I mean, there's no heartburn on our end, I mean...
And health clubs and gyms, too, I don't know there if that needs to, that was, I don't know what broad category that would be under.
There's actually a category in, that Institute of Transportation Engineers does, and it was health clubs, fitness clubs, spas, and a whole bunch of other things, and the numbers were all across the board. There was, if you looked at standard deviation in the study, none of the studies even related to one another. I'm not quite sure how it all worked out there.
Lots of outliers.
Yes, exactly, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I appreciate y'all. We have been, you know, preaching business friendly and where we can make things simple, and that's, that's what you're getting here, so this exchange is really good, finding out where the limits are, because openly, it is city council's policy, it's not our policy.
I don't get many complaints on businesses and things, especially Ward 3, we got a lot of them. Maybe they just come in the city with you.
I get a lot of complaints about the feather signs.
About what?
To allow them or not?
Feather signs?
Yeah, to allow them.
Well, it, it's a much less expensive alternative for certain, for certain businesses that can't afford a wall sign or, or a monument sign. I mean, we've had issues with recently churches doing it that aren't fully established yet, but if we could, we're trying to, we're trying to get that, that balance. We do allow those people that have come in to us, maybe have received a letter or a phone call from, you know, myself, Cal, Ross, Tyler, saying, "I'm sorry, ma'am, sir, you got to take that feather flag down, or you got 10 days to take it down." We offer them the alternative, because we do offer temporary banners as, as well, but it's just something in the past that, it just has, it's not something, I think, conducive to the environment that we want to, that we want to have.
I've noticed, like, the churches that meet and other staff, like the schools, Jenkins has a church, and then on Sunday, they put out the signs, that.
Well, we offer the alternative of a temporary banner, relatively inexpensive. Some people avail themselves of that, and some do not.
I was going to say, is there any way we could tweak that as far as maybe operation hours, they can have them out and then put them back up once they close?
That's, that's a problem. It's, I mean, I respect the idea, but it's not really enforceable, and most of the businesses will leave them up continuously. Not saying not all. Some people are very diligent and, and respectful to the law, but others will just leave them up all the time, and, you know, we have one person for, for 29 square miles. It's extremely difficult to enforce. I mean, I have recently had churches basically ratting each other out on signs.
No.
I mean, I love the Lord and all, but what I'm saying is, like, as far as a small business, you know, sometimes those feather signs mean a lot, you know, especially if they're, if they're just opening, and they're trying to get customers to notice them, and they can't afford a lot of the signage that we spoke about.
Well, again, we do have both a temporary 12-week banner and a banner that is renewed annually that they could have. Now, if council or the manager's office tells me we'd rather see that pennant flag than a maximum 32-square-foot temporary banner, we can certainly modify the ordinance. It's, it's fully up to, up to council, and the past council has told us they didn't like the feather flags, but if that's...
I think the feather flags are, serve a purpose, and they're not any more distracted than, than what we allow now, but I would, if we were to review feather flags, I'd want to put a limit on it.
Tyler.
Put a limit on how many you can have.
But we've already got the banners.
Yeah, and, and forcibility, because we keep a record of those signs, those temporary banners that we permit, we have a record of those, and when someone gets to the end of their year, we will notify them, you either need to take it down or renew it, and the same for the 12-week. And if it's a feather flag, I'm not sure we want to get into permitting a feather flag, and before you know it, those will, will proliferate.
Those will be a...
So that's, that's something that's totally up to council.
We can look at some options on what other communities have done, I mean, maybe a grand opening sort of...
Well, what I would suggest to that, with all due respect, is drive up north of MDI on a Saturday and count the feather flags.
They, they could end up being like the bandit signs, you know, that you see, because they're...
Might be like Pandora's box.
But we could look at some options on what might be possible, so.
I'd be, I would be supportive of looking, maybe at some options. Banners, and I know you prescribe the actual, how big the banner can be, but they, from a business perspective, they've probably gotten more expensive than feather flags. I've never bought a feather flag. But the banners are difficult to attach, and then to attach firmly, and you get them to look good, and you get a wind that comes through, and they rip up, and, I mean, so...
Feather flags are seen.
Yeah.
They're tall, and...
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't know. I tend to, it might be a use.
One councilman just hates.
That's a councilwoman.
David, do you hear more like, for new openings for businesses or just in general?
New openings and just people that are trying to get people, you know, customers to notice their business, you know, as they're driving by, you know, it's just like when the car, car dealers just put a giant monkey out there just to make you look, you know, and sometimes you have some businesses that are really struggling financially, and they're trying to do anything possible to gain attention from ongoing customers. And, you know, and if we're in the, if we're trying to be business friendly, I just think that maybe we could regulate it, maybe it could be smaller or something. I just thought I would just mention that, because that is a complaint that I get a lot.
And just for the record, we don't allow inflatable monkeys either. We've gotten in trouble with those, too.
The car dealerships.
We had a lawsuit with, was it Lennar? With inflatable Santas.
We prevailed in that litigation.
But if the mind of council's changed, just, you know, with feather flags, let it just...
Feather flags, it's for what we can...
However, we'll be directed, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Good work, thank you.
I'll consider it.
Good job, Ms. Fraser.
Okay, sir. All right, item 3. Lastly, budget, so things are going to start moving more quickly with our bond projects, and the first one, moving very quickly, is Trivium Corporate Center, and we've got a groundbreaking out there tomorrow at 3 o'clock, and we're hoping that there's a break in the rain during, during the groundbreaking. But my guess is we're moving, we are moving forward with that. Okay, so that is on. But in addition to that, related to that property in behind there, we are recommending moving forward with purchasing two parcels from two separate property owners, and it requires a budget amendment of 2.345 million. And I think that's a little bit more than the initial amount that went out, which was an estimate, this is actually the amount on the closing statement. So, and half of that is City of Hickory, and half of that is Catawba County, and this will come out of the City of Hickory's bond proceeds and on our side. So we are recommending approval, first reading on this budget amendment, then we would, if approved, we would come back at your meeting at 7 o'clock and do the second reading and move forward with the closing.
So it's running through our budget because we're the financial jurisdiction, because I do what she has.